Welcome to the December 13, 2021, Meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Councillor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of December 6?
All in favor, all opposed? Couldn't not have Ira call for the motion.
Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Chairman, Vice President Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we had one item on the agenda, and it's about the change in meter rates. We have elected, due to the fact that there are some more questions that need to be answered, we've elected to table this motion. And that is it. Thank you. I'm sorry, placed on file, that's right. So it's been placed on file.
Placed on file.
Next up is the Zoning Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Keefe.
Mr. President, tonight's zoning subcommittee only had one item in front of us this evening, the proposal for an 11-unit additional structure to be added onto 465 Revere Beach Boulevard with 17 off-street parking spaces. There were some conditions that were involved. It was voted on unanimously by the zoning subcommittee.
Roll call. Call or roll as amended?
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested, subject to the findings and conditions as adopted by the zoning subcommittee? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Calendar item number six, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Pasquale De Feo as a constable.
Mr. President. Chairman Guanasso.
Mr. President, the appointment subcommittee is going to meet, and we have a communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Pasquale De Feo as a constable, a longtime constable, well-known to the people of Revere and the people of Everett, and we look forward to him having many more years of service through our community. Any members of the subcommittee wishing to say something? Seeing none, any members of the City Council wishing to say something? Seeing none, I ask Mr. De Feo's nomination and appointment be approved by this committee of the whole.
Motion on the floor. Roll call?
Yes, please.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointment of Pasquale De Feo as a constable? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Thank you. Continue to do a good job for our community.
Thank you, Councilors.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
In accordance with Rule 23 of the City Council Rules of Order, the following motions are reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. These are calendar item numbers seven through 19.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed. So ordered.
One motion, calendar item number 20, motion presented by Councillor Rotundo, that the mayor request the school building committee to submit all survey and polling material regarding site selection for the placement of a new high school to the Revere City Council.
Councillor Rotundo?
Speak, Rotundo.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed. So ordered.
Next up is the presentation of the legislative bench. Let me just grab that communication, Councillor, Council President. Dear Honorable Councillors, in keeping with the custom and tradition of the Revere City Council, the City Council shall honor six of its members by placing their names and years of service as members of the Revere City Council on nameplates on the City Council's legislative bench, which sits in the City Council chamber behind the members of the City Council. To receive this special recognition, city councillors must have served for a decade or more on the City Council. As of today, 20 past and present members of the City Council are on the legislative bench. Tonight's city councillors being honored at signed die are as follows. One, Ward Three City Councillor and longest-serving member of the Revere City Council, Arthur F. Guanasso, is placed on the legislative bench for completing 34 years of service as a member of the City Council. Ward Two City Councillor, Ira Novoselsky's name is placed on the legislative bench with 22 years of service as a member of the City Council. Councillor-at-large and City Council President, Anthony T. Zambudo's name is placed on the legislative bench with 22 years of service as a member of the City Council. Ward Five City Councillor, John F. Powers, is placed on the legislative bench with 21 years and seven months of service as a member of the City Council. Councillor-at-large, George Rotundo's name is placed on the legislative bench with 14 years of service as a member of the City Council. And last but not least, and for the first time, Councillor-at-large, Jessica A. Janino's name is placed on the legislative bench with 10 years of service as a member of the City Council. I think so. Yeah.
Point of information, Mr. President?
Yeah.
If I may?
We have to take a picture, bud.
Okay, may I say something, though? Please? I believe State Representative Janino, Councillor Janino, that you are, if my understanding is correct, the longest-serving female representative in the city of Revere. Yeah, first accomplishment.
I learned something tonight. Thank you, councillor.
Councillor-elect, to the Great and General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Councillor Jessica Janino was elected as state representative to serve the 16th Suffolk District. Councillor Janino is the eighth Revere City Councillor and only female City Councillor to be honored with this recognition.
Just for the edification, there are plaques up here. Right here.
Oh, wow!
Not many people get on this section here, I can tell you that. I know. It's all good.
Next up on tonight's signed die agenda, acknowledgement of Jessica A. Janino and Joseph A. Janino, family members who have served on the Revere City Council. Councillor Jessica Janino served as City Councillor from 2012 through 2021. She also served as President of the Revere City Council in 2016 and 2018. Joseph A. Janino served as City Councillor for a single term from 2002 through 2003.
Well, thank you, thank you.
I just want to say that having been an elected official in the city of Revere has been the greatest honor of my life. At 53 years old, I look back at my time here, the four terms, three terms as a school committee member, my one term as a City Councillor, and I can say with as much certainty that it has been just an extraordinary honor. But truth be told, the real test is living your life through the eyes of the next generation. And to be able to look at my children and to watch them succeed and to watch you succeed is just the most extraordinary, wonderful thing. I think I was more excited about your election as a City Councillor than as a state representative than I was about any of mine. So onward, Jess. I'm so proud of you, and I love you with all my heart. Next up is the acknowledgement of the 2021 City Council President, outgoing City Council President, Councillor-at-large, Anthony T. Zambudo.
If I can just say a few words. Being a newly-elected official, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve as your Vice President. Before getting on the council, Tony and I really didn't know each other that well. We were just colleagues. I was on the school committee, he was on the council, always very respectful. But since then, over the last two years, I think we've built a friendship, a very good friendship, and that friendship is going to be missed. And I am honored that you have devoted 22 years to this city. The city is going to lose a very strong, I guess, the one thing that I can say about Tony is that he means what he says. And, you know, it is true that if he gives his word, he'll keep it. And that's something to say about somebody, especially an elected official. So I am honored to be a friend. I'm honored to have served with you, and good luck in the future. Thank you. Drop the mic, drop the mic.
And last but not least, we're now acknowledging the outgoing city councillors. Councillor-at-large, Jessica Janino, Ward Three Councillor, Arthur F. Guanasso, Ward Five Councillor, John F. Powers, and Councillor-at-large, Anthony T. Zambudo.
Well, I'm glad I get to go first, because I'm going to be crying by the time we get to that end of the council chamber tonight, and I thought I wasn't going to. First of all, I want to say thank you to everyone that's here tonight, my friends, my family, my supporters that have been with me over the last 10 years. Thank you for being here. My colleagues up here, thank you. I prepared some remarks because I knew I was going to be at a loss for words once I sat here, because this is so real. Tonight marks a bittersweet end for me of a decade of public service to the city of Revere as a City Councillor. It feels like it was yesterday. I was 19-years-old, a sophomore at Salem State in November of 2011, anxiously waiting for my numbers to come in on Revere TV, sitting in my living room with my family, and then my life changed forever. Over the last 10 years, I've had the honor to serve with two mayors, two state representatives, going on three senators, it's election day tomorrow, and alongside so many wonderful colleagues that I'm sitting here with tonight, including Bob Hass and Richie Penta, who are no longer with us but were there when I started and were really important in this journey for me. From the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you to my colleagues, and those that aren't here as well, like my dear colleague Charlie Patch, my Ward Six Councillor, who was then seceded by my other dear friend Ricky Serino, so it's been quite an honor to see that seat change. I'm so proud of what I've accomplished in this time. Since my first election in 2011, I watched Suffolk Downs grow and develop from a casino to the mixed-use community that it's become, a real jewel for the city of Revere. This project, along with so many others I've had the pleasure to work on, will transform the city of Revere and what it looks like for next generations. On the City Council, I've had the distinct honor to serve as City Council Vice President and City Council President twice. I'm pretty sure I've served on every subcommittee, most notably chairing zoning and appointments, but only when my dear colleague was the Council President. I can honestly say that these years of service have made me a stronger legislator, but more importantly, a better person. This opportunity has given me the ability to work and help so many people in the city of Revere. I have so many people to thank, but most importantly, I have to thank the people of this great city who have overwhelmingly supported me and elected me in the last six general elections and a few primaries in between. Without your support and trust, I wouldn't be sitting here today. I also want to thank the backbone of the City Council and my dear friend Ashley Melnick. If it wasn't for her knowledge and guidance over the last 10 years, I wouldn't have been able to do it, and the reality of it is, none of us up here would. Finally, to my supporters, my family, my friends, thank you. Since I first made this decision 10 years ago, sitting in my backyard, my family's been with me, and they've been by my side. My dad and my grandparents have been with me every step of the way, and without their love and support at home, and my dad's always come, I'll tell you when it's time to worry. I wouldn't have made it through several tough meetings and a lot of tough years. To my grandmother, my campaign manager, my treasurer, and my rock, Googie, thank you. Tonight is not an end, but it's the beginning of a new chapter for me as a state representative for the city of Revere, a city that I love so much. And although my service in this role is ending, my service as your state representative is just beginning. I've spent the last year in the State House building relationships and working on legislation that will continue to improve what we've already been working on in the city of Revere. Now is the rep I have three communities to serve, not just Revere, but also Chelsea and Saugus, and I'm excited to expand this work that we've been doing in these new communities and continue to fight for our community. I look forward to many, many more years of service in the city of Revere, and I really want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart. This has been one of the greatest and most rewarding experiences of my lifetime. Thank you.
All right, so if anybody wants to give some accolades to Jess or any other councillors after this, go ahead. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jess? I was hiding these. In 2018, Jess, we made history in Revere being the first female president and vice president to serve the city of Revere on the council. We rolled five ordinances in that one year. We advocated for plastic, to ban plastic bags. but only when my dear colleague was the Council President. I can honestly say that these years of service have made me a stronger legislator, but more importantly, a better person. This opportunity has given me the ability to work and help so many people in the city of Revere. I have so many people to thank, but most importantly, I have to thank the people of this great city who have overwhelmingly supported me and elected me in the last six general elections and a few primaries in between. Without your support and trust, I wouldn't be sitting here today. I also want to thank the backbone of the City Council and my dear friend Ashley Melnick. If it wasn't for her knowledge and guidance over the last 10 years, I wouldn't have been able to do it. And the reality of it is, none of us up here would. Finally, to my supporters, my family, my friends, thank you. Since I first made this decision 10 years ago, sitting in my backyard, my family's been with me and they've been by my side. My dad and my grandparents have been with me every step of the way, and without their love and support at home. And my dad's always come, "I'll tell you when it's time to worry." I wouldn't have made it through several tough meetings and a lot of tough years. To my grandmother, my campaign manager, my treasurer, and my rock, Googie, thank you. Tonight is not an end, but it's the beginning of a new chapter for me as a state representative for the city of Revere, a city that I love so much. And although my service in this role is ending, my service as your state representative is just beginning. I've spent the last year in the State House building relationships and working on legislation that will continue to improve what we've already been working on in the city of Revere. Now as the Rep, I have three communities to serve, not just Revere, but also Chelsea and Saugus. And I'm excited to expand this work that we've been doing in these new communities and continue to fight for our community. I look forward to many, many more years of service in the city of Revere. And I really want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart. This has been one of the greatest and most rewarding experiences of my lifetime. Thank you.
after this, go ahead. Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jess, I was hiding these. In 2018, Jess, we made history in Revere being the first female president and vice president to serve the city of Revere on the council. We rolled five ordinances in that one year. We advocated for plastic, to ban plastic bags in polystirene, which made a difference, huge difference, in this community. I love you, Jess. I'm going to miss you terribly. You are a great friend and you were a great colleague, and I'm going to truly miss you sitting beside me. Good luck moving forward. I hope you knock them dead. The council pitched in, and we want to present you with a card and some roses.
Thank you.
No, no other guys get roses.
I'm disappointed you win.
I'm sorry, Tony.
Councilor Morabito.
So, I started on the council with Jessica. From City Council meetings to Monday night dinners to weekend night outs, we, I gained a friendship from Jess, and I knew that my sidekick would always be there for me. So it's going to be different to serve on this council without her, because we always knew we had each other's back, and she was always genuine. I knew where she was coming, she knew where I was going, you know? So Jess, I'm going to miss you. You know, obviously, this isn't goodbye, you know? I'm su, you know, I could shed a tear, you know, but I'm not going to. Just the, this is what it's all about, you know, this job, connecting with people. The memories you make, and the memories we made together, I will never forget, and I'm so happy for you, your accomplishments, all you've done, all you've, all we've championed together, and I wish you nothing but the best. So thank you.
Do I have to? Mr. President, it's been an honor and a pleasure for my dear friend. We shared a lot of quiet moments together. Without the mic. Well, I'm on the public, you know, I don't want to say everything, you know? And my wife's at home watching, and my family's home watching. But I will say one thing. It's been a pleasure working with you. You've been very, very nice to me and my family. We certainly think the world of you. You know, we shared a lot of quiet moments of expression of thoughts. We weren't saying how to vote on anything, mind you, if the Ethics Commission is watching. We just shared opinions, and our opinions usually worked out to be the same. And that's what I, a real bond and a real friend, and I will miss you dearly. I'm so proud of you taking up the reins to go to the State House and show the boys what it's all about, you know? And I heard the Speaker Mariano there on TV the other day. You're going to ring circles around that guy. You're going to do wonderful things for our community. You're going to do great things for the cities you represent, and certainly be mindful of the fact that you were the kid from Revere that came to the City Council as a young kid and grew up very quickly to take on a very, very huge task undertaken as a city councillor, and you did it with class. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Janino, Madam Rep, I don't even know where to begin. It's been an honor to sit across from this rostrum the past two years, from watching you across the aisle in Mrs. Dipolito's first-grade class at the Whalen School to now the City Council Chamber, and watching you excel in your career. I can remember being at college when you ran in 2011 and just thinking, "Go, Jess, go." You've always been a promising young woman with a bright future, intelligent. I always knew from the time we were little kids that, you know, I don't want to say you were bossy, but you definitely had a leadership. You had a, you could tell that you were, you were a natural, a natural leader, and you've, you fit so well into that role. You love this city, you bleed, you bleed the city of Revere, and we are so fortunate to have you, not only on our council and have had you on this council for 10 years, but in the State House, fighting for us. And I just want to say, you know, our friendship, obviously, our friendship will continue long after this, and I just want to say how much I respect that, you know, we've had conversations in the past about disagreeing on issues and whatnot, and we always, we never take it personally, and we always can agree to disagree, and that's, you know, that's what democracy is all about. And I love you, and I'm going to miss seeing you on Monday nights. But I know you're going to do well on Beacon Hill for us.
Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Rep, Jess, there's a reason why you've topped the ticket for at-large for so many years, is because the city of Revere loves you, and we love you. While I'm going to miss working with you, I know you're not going far, because I look forward to working with you on the state level. And congratulations with all your accomplishments, and they've just begun. So there's more to come. Congratulations.
Thank you. Jessica, I remember speaking to you on Malden Street when you were first considering to run for at-large. As a matter of fact, I think I gave you your first voters list. And your political acumen, your maturity, sense of dedication, has proven itself time and time again.
Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think she just said she loved me. Representative, well, you mentioned Jen. Representative Janino, Councilor Janino. And this, this really goes for all of the outgoing members of our council. We're losing 88 years of experience on our City Council tonight. 88 years of service, 88 years of wisdom, 88 years of activism. Some of, some of the members standing next to me, sitting next to me, Councilor Janino was the president twice, Councilor Guanasso was the president once, Councilor Zambuto was the president once, while I was here, I apologize. While I was here. So they've, outside of myself, they have been my presidents. These are the presidents that I've had. I'm losing my icons on the City Council. Jessica, Councilor Janino Jessica, I'm going to say Jessica because you're my friend, and you are, Councilor Visconti said that you're a product of Revere. You, Revere does love you. They love your family. You're an extension of your family. You are just continuing on the tradition and what they've taught you to be. I envy that. You're much younger than I am, not that I'm that much older, but I always take into account my name. I want to create a name, I never want to disrespect my name. Councillor, you have done nothing to ever put any blemishes on your family's name, and I know that you're going to continue to embed it in the city of Revere, and I hope that you'll continue to embed it in the state of Massachusetts. So congratulations. This is not a goodbye. This is the what's next. Congratulations. We're going to continue to watch our favorite Revere daughter grow. Congratulations.
Counselor Neil Viselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jessica, I can't match what everybody has said tonight. I equal it, and it has been a pleasure, believe it or not. I remember, I remember you back in 1995 and 97 when I ran at-large, being down at Cousin Joe's house, bringing the bagels down there after one of the elections. And it's really been a pleasure working with you. But you know what I'm going to miss the most from you? All the selfies you take. You know, I, you know, I couldn't believe, you took selfies in places that nobody would ever think of, and the people you got involved with, and I really appreciate that you included me and the rest of my colleagues and your colleagues, and we will miss you, and you will be hearing it from us up at the State House.
So the good news is that when you have the name Zambuto, you usually get to speak last. And especially if you're the president, you get to speak last. But I watched you grow. I watched you when you came here, and you had a big advantage. You came from a lineage of the Janino family that was impeccable, and your upbringing shows, obviously. I'm so proud of you. I think I've told you a few times, but so I can say this publicly tonight, I'm very proud of you. I know you're going to do a wonderful job at the State House. You already have made a name for yourself. People love you up there like we love you here in Revere. So I wish you nothing but the best.
Next up in recognition as an outgoing city councillor is Ward Three Councillor Arthur Guanasso.
Counselor, my former council president, my, my, you're like my roommate over here, sitting next to me. This is like the dorm, this, this side of the chambers, whether you can see this on Revere TV or not, this is the rowdy end of the dorm room. We did an RA. I joined the council and I was surrounded by Councillor Haas and Councillor Guanasso, some of the most senior members of our City Council, and I was nervous as all heck. And I can tell you that both of them took me in very fatherly. They showed me the ropes, they made me laugh, they made me extremely comfortable when I was very uncomfortable. The first few times of me public speaking, I almost sweat through my suit. And it took me some time, but both of those councillors were like, like fatherly, very fatherly to me, still are, Councillor. Councillor Guanasso, and God rest his soul, Councillor Haas. But Councillor Guanasso, serving 34 years on the City Council and 34 years in our city, is a testament to who he is as a man. He has many times given up, time for his family, time for his personal life, time for the fun and things that he wants to enjoy his grandchildren, to serve the city of Revere. 34 years. Very often in politics, you, you don't gain friends. Sometimes you have to gain enemies. And that's unfortunate because you have to make sometimes tough decisions. You have to split the room. I don't know how Councillor Guanasso's done it for 34 years, but for whatever reason, he kept on bringing people under that tent, and he kept on gaining steam, and he kept on gaining supporters. He was like a snowball going downhill, continuing to bring people along with him. You're, you're an icon, Councillor. Your picture's up on the wall, and I hope that you'll, you'll watch, and I hope that you'll message us throughout the council meetings. I know you're not going anywhere. Someday, I hope to see some buildings or some, some statues in the city with your name on them. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
As you probably know, it's bittersweet, it's a time of enjoyment, and yet it's a time of, a time of very much concern, because I'm going to be thinking about this for many days in the future. You don't stop something for 34 years and just walk away and not have any thoughts with it. I have tremendous thoughts with that, and I was looking at some pictures at home in reflecting on the past of what we've done with my, me, my family, my committee, going to the various functions. Politics is completely different now, and when I started the endeavor of being a elected official, there were many, many civic organizations throughout the city. My routine on a Saturday was to visit five social events areas, Soccorso, Sons of Italy, Patriots Club. These, you know, these were my Saturday work effort, but yet I enjoyed every minute of it. And I, it brought to me a closeness with the people that I represented. And fortunately enough, most of those organizations were in Ward Three. So I, it was just a, but unconsciously, I never, ever ran for office thinking that I was going to last for 34 years. I mean, it just doesn't, you don't think of those things, you know? You take day by day and hope you do the best you can, and if people like you, they like you. Unfortunately, even the newly-elected councillors coming in will sooner find out. Once you make a decision, some people are happy, some people are unhappy. And so you try to tell the people that are unhappy the reasoning as why you went the other way, against their wishes. And so if you do that, and you're fair with people, and you're honest to yourself and the people you represent, you'll have longevity in this. If you think you can outsmart your constituents, think another thing. It's not going to work. It's not going to happen. If someone calls you and asks you or requests on your phone, which you'll get many of, you've got to respond. You don't have to respond that minute, but respond. Give them an answer, an honest answer. Don't bull them because it comes back, you know? The truth comes out, and you, and you have to deal with it. And so it just, and the other most important thing, as I said previously when I was being mentioned that I was going to leave, is to be kind to one another. That's the most important product that we have in today's world. I don't see that on a daily basis anywhere in this country anymore. I'm so saddened by that. And that's one of the privileges you get as a senior citizen. You start to, you start to review what's going on, and you can see from the past. You know, and the past wasn't always great either, but I don't see the kindness being shared with one another. And I think that it all lies here in this council chamber, which I hold sacred. I mean, I, that's why I was steadfast in some of the things I did when I was council president. No bull, don't come up and start giving other, you know, the theater, you know, the theater belongs in one location. Over here, just tell us the bottom line, what you're, what you're all about, and that's what shot in my meetings. And not to make brevity the most important part of life, but come to the, come to the point quickly. And so be kind to one another, enjoy the holidays, everyone. The people of Ward Three are forever holding my heart. My former colleagues, my present colleagues forever think the world of you and hold you in my heart very closely. And certainly the people of Ward, the city of Revere, all over the city, the graciousness they've shown me and my family. I mean, everywhere I go, and I'm a frequent visitor, as seniors do now, you go to Market Basket, and that is the meeting hall of everywhere. That's the social club in one, one unit, in one place, and everybody and their brother is at Market Basket. But you know, the spirit of friendship that I enjoy there, and I'm saying, people saying hello and hi, how are you, I don't even know who they are. And it's just, and I ask, "What's your name and where you live?" And it's, it's a new awareness for me, it's a new phase in my life, and I really enjoy it, you know? Because they can ask me something and say, "I wish I could do it for you, but I can't." You know, it's a part of life that goes with this territory, and you enjoy that. So again, thank you all for being so nice to me, and especially to my family. I owe a debt of gratitude to my family. They've just been so supportive of me, and my prayers go out to my little baby daughter who's now home with COVID, and she's going to kill me for saying that. She's had it since before Thanksgiving. And so my prayers are for her to get better, and I know my family's praying for her to get better. And we want everybody to get vaccinated and to be safe, so we can all enjoy one another in a safe spirit. God bless everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Where do I begin about my dear colleague Arthur Guanasso? You know, when I sat down today and I looked at him and I said, "You know what I never realized, Arthur? There's never been a point in my life when you weren't a city councillor." I was born in 91, and you've been in office since before I was born. So for my entire life, you have been a prominent figure in the city of Revere. We started as colleagues, we became friends, and now I can truly call you family. I, I've looked at you so many times for advice and for counsel in situations and difficult situations. situations you find yourself in on the council. I've looked at you for laughs and we've shared so many. And I just, I'm at a loss for words. You're my friend. You're an asset to the city of Revere. We've been so, so lucky to have you for 34 years. Linda, thank you for sharing him with us, the rock of the Guanasso family. We love you, Linda. Arthur, I know that this is bittersweet for you as it is for me, but I got to walk in this chamber with you and I'm walking out of it with you. And I can't ask for a better partner or a better friend to do that with. I love you. I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Arthur. I love you. Love you. I will miss your presence and your guidance, always. You were always my go-to person when we were faced with some big and difficult decisions that was before the council, that was before the council. Thank you for your expertise, especially your friendship. I love you and I will miss you and your no-tolerance BS on this council. And I love when you, when you're trying to get a quesadilla before the council is over. It's unbelievable. You guys don't know this, but he calls Companions before the, the council's over and they have it waiting for him when he arrives. It's unbelievable. This has been going on for years. So I'm going to miss that. And he'd be, if, if the meeting ran over, he would be like, oh my God, I want a quesadilla. Oh my God, I gotta get a quesadilla. I hope they don't close. The kitchen's going to close at eight o'clock. I'm going to miss it. I'm going to miss it. So good luck in your next chapter and I love you. Thank you. And, oh, before I end, this is presented to you from the city council.
No flowers.
No roses. Enjoy. Enjoy it with Linda.
Councillor Morabito.
What can I say? My colleague, my friend, the quesadilla king. A lot of people, for those of you who are watching, you know, a lot of people think, you know, Arthur and I do not get along. Over the past year, there has been some controversy. But the fact of the matter is, I have top-notch respect for Arthur. He has always been respectful, level-headed, and he was always fear imbalanced. I could always go to him and ask his advice. He would give me his perception of things and how others would look at it and how he would see them. And I respected that. He was always a class act and everyone in the, who is watching should know that. The first word that comes to my mind when I think of Arthur is class act. Every situation he goes into, every agenda item we vote on, every person he speaks to, he does it with class. So how things may perceive, be perceived on television isn't always the way it is. Though what people spew out on Facebook and social media is not always how it is. These are people's lives. We go home at night, we have family, we have loved ones. At the end of the day, we all got into this job because we love helping people. Can we help everyone? No. But this guy beside me, councillor Guanasso, has been doing it for 30 years. Thirty years of help, 33 years of helping people. That's when you couldn't get your message out on social media. When there weren't cell phones in everyone's pocket, you had to knock on people's door to let them know you care. You had to write letters to invite people places. So at the end of the day, when you think of 33 years of serving one community, its people and having the best interest of the people and its city, it's a remarkable accomplishment. And I could not point out the obvious of who he is as a person. So those haters out there who hate on Guanasso, it's not true. He's a class act, first-rate politician and a great husband, a great hu, um, father. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your service.
Councillor Nowosowski.
Wow. I know I'm friendly with everybody here, but I'm really losing a friend. And I have mixed emotions. As you said, it's bittersweet and we've gone through a lot together. We've had bad times and we've had good times. Thank God, there's a lot more good times. We've lost a lot of friends over the last 20 years that I've been together. Richie Penta, Jimmy Kivoli, I lost Joe Delgrasso, I lost Bob Haas, Billy Reinstein, George Calala, that I could think of right now. And, but I'm glad that you and I will continue to have breakfast at Santorini's periodically. And I just wish you a lot of luck. I wish Linda a lot more luck, having you home all the time. But I wish you good luck. I will miss you. I will miss our dinners after council meetings, going down to Companions and other places. So I wish you the good and believe it or not, I do love you, my friend. Thank you.
Councillor Sharino. Councillor Retondo.
Thank you. Arthur, character is doing what's right when no one's looking and you've done that throughout your tenure. You've represented yourself here without malice and kindness to all, regardless of issue or debate. I have a feeling when you're at home instead of up here, you'll be clicking that thing when I talk too much, as I do so much. And you've been nothing but kind to me and I am grateful for your friendship and you are a gracious public servant that will be sorely missed.
Councillor Sharino.
To the dean of our council, it's, it's been a pleasure, you know, not only sitting here with you for the last two years, but getting to know you when, when I was working in Rep Vincent's office before that, Santa walks and all kinds of fun community events. But more importantly, over the last two years, as a colleague, you've been a mentor. When we lose you, we're losing a ton of institutional knowledge and that's, that's a shame for the council. But I know that you, you deserve this retirement, you deserve your time with your grandchildren and to get away from all the nonsense that, that politics sometimes is. So I'm really, I'm happy for you, I'm happy for Linda, but I am going to miss my friend. And hopefully, I know we'll, we'll still talk and I'll still seek your advice, so don't go too far. Thank you, councillor.
Councillor Vice President Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Arthur, you have been the cornerstone of this council by all stretch of that. And I want to say that you have served your ward with tremendous pride, dignity, and most important, integrity. I appreciate those calls that you've taken of mine when asking for some advice. You've always been there and given me your honest opinion and I knew it came from the heart. So I want to thank you for all your help. I congratulate you for serving 34, 33 years. I, I, 34, right? I can't, I, I, I can't imagine doing that. I honestly can't. And that's such an accomplishment. And the accomplishments throughout those 34 years are too many to call out now. But there are some big shoes to fill in Ward Three. And best of luck to you in your retirement.
Looks like I'm up here. Arthur, you've been my ward councillor as long as I've lived in Revere. Well, maybe not. But you, you've been, as long as I've lived in Ward Three, you've been my Ward Three councillor. I can't remember you not being here. And you served the citizens of Revere well, especially the citizens of Ward Three. They always knew where you were coming from and that's what I liked about you. You know bull crap, you were, tell it like it is, tell it how you feel. We didn't always agree. And you gave me a hard time many times that I let people talk too long or not control the meeting and I, I got ribbed from you a lot. But I, I learnt a lot from you. I have tremendous respect for you. You're a wonderful person, a man of God, and I love you.
The next outgoing city councillor is Ward Five councillor, John F. Powers.
Unfortunately, John's not here tonight, but that doesn't mean we're not going to talk about him. So we'll start with Jessica. Councillor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll go right on down the line. What can I say about my dear friend, councillor Powers, who was my ward councillor now for part of my legislative district? John has been an advocate for the community. We didn't always agree on every issue, but he always stuck up for the residents in Ward Five. He always spoke for the people when there were concerns and he always tried to find a solution. Very sad that I can't see John tonight and that he can't be here with us to, you know, take in his accolades and take in this last evening as a councillor. But know that we're all thinking of you, John, and we all wish you a speedy recovery. Your health comes first and we need you in the city for a long time. So rest up, get well soon, and we'll all be here in some capacity when you get back. Thank you.
Councillor Guanasso.
Mr. President, thank you. John's been a dear, dear friend for many, many years, obviously. I knew John long before I was a Ward Three councillor. We were active in, in many campaigns of various people over the years. He's been a very conscious individual for his, his whole life in, in terms of representing the people of Ward Five and they were very lucky to have him. He, he shared a lot of opportunities with people. He worked as hard as he possibly could for them. And I just hope that he has a speedy recovery. Unfortunately, like things go, when things go bad, they go bad. And unfortunately, he took this fall and he had this, now he's recovering and you had to put a pacemaker in, make him better. My God, he's gone through quite a bit in, in the health realm and we hope and pray that his recovery is the most important thing at this time now. I know he's, was defeated at the polls, but he was not defeated in this city council chambers. For each one, every one of us know the amount of effort and workforce that he's done with for this community and for Ward Five. So we offer prayers for John and we, we thank him for his years of service and hopefully things will be better. And maybe when he feels better, I'll take him out for a cup of coffee or something and we'll, we'll share some, some good times together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I did want to say that I hope and pray for John's speedy recovery. We're sorry we're missing him the last couple of meetings. But John, councillor Powers, again, has been an iconic city councillor. No one has put more time in their ward than councillor Powers. He lived, eat and breathe Ward Five. You could never get around a conversation without him finishing it up with, but the pines this, or the boulevard this, or something to do with Ward Five. And I'm like, John, I'm talking, talking about West Broadway here, you know? He, he really, he cared so, so deeply about his job and what he did for the city. There's no, there's no councillor on this council that's been as strong as he is. He's been dealt with a lot in his life and he's always fought back. He's, he's a, he's a very, he's one of the strongest people I've ever met. So I, I know that John will recover well and I hope that after this council session is over, he will find a way to serve, continue to serve. Actually, I know regardless of title, John, councillor Powers will continue to serve the city. I wish he was here tonight, but I hope you're doing well at home, John. Take care.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. John was my boss when I was 16 years old. He was my supervisor at Parks and Recreation. And he used to come by every single day to check on us, to see if we were there. And we knew what time he was coming. So we were there when he came. Maybe we weren't there when he wasn't there, but he was my boss and for six, when I was 16, and that was a long time ago. When I became a councillor, he reached out to me and said, whatever you need, Joanne, I will help you. And he has. I took advantage of his help for six and a half years. Every time I would put in a good motion, I would look at him, he would look at me, he'd wink at me and smile and I knew I was on the right track. So good luck going forward, John. I have, we have a gift for you and I will deliver it personally. I love you. Thank you.
Councillor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to echo the same, similar words as councillor Keith did. Councillor Powers did eat, sleep and drink Ward Five, you know? He literally did. Every conversation you had, it was how was it going to affect the people in his ward? One thing I've always admired about John is he had a story that could date back to, I don't even know how many years, because he was in politics for so long and has seen so many great things, some shady things. And being with him has always been, being, talking to him has always, always been a teaching moaning, moment and a learning moment, you know? He's just always been, had a history of politics. So like he, I could always learn from him. He's going to be missed in his ward. Speedy, excuse, pardon me, my, my colleagues are making comments here and there. I should, let me clarify. When I say shady moments, you know, so-called allegedly shady moments, you know? You know? But anyways, let, let, I'm not digging, I'm speaking the truth. He's been a long, he's been in politics for 80 years, you know? The guy's been in, listen, so anyways, councillor Powers, you love politics. I know you're watching, you know I mean well, you know we all wish you the best. And that's all I can say. Play, play the music, Tony, play the music.
Councillor Nowosowski.
Boy, how can I follow this? Wow. Anyway, John and I have been together on the council for the last 20 years, as I have been with councillor Zambuto. But I know John and I've known John for maybe 30 years even before that. I remember when he worked at the State House and he worked for the governor, Governor Peabody. And all the things he did for the city back then, when he worked for Parks and Recreation, when he worked for our various mayors, he always put his heart into his job. And again, even then, it was in Ward Five, even though he was covering a lot of the city. He, as everybody said, he loved his ward and he gave everything for it. And I congratulate him, I applaud him, and I wish you a lot of luck and a lot of health, my friend. Thank you.
Councillor Retondo.
Thank you, Mr. President. John, I've known you since childhood. And many people don't know this, that John's nephews and I grew up together, we were best friends. And John was always known as Uncle John to them, of course. But he was the man that could help anybody. And when we were kids, everybody was looking for a job. And John would always help people find employment. And as Ira had said, he's been in government since Governor Peabody. And as Ira had said, he's been in government since Governor Peabody over 50 years of service to this great, excuse me, this Commonwealth and our community. But John is a class act. He is one of those few public servants that when they give you their word, they keep it. And that currency is something that speaks to his character, and that is highly valued. And maybe one of these days, we'll grab a cookie with your favorite Lucille. Take care, my friend.
Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Powers, we miss you, and we hope, we wish you a speedy recovery. It's been an honor the last two years serving with you. I really, I'm going to miss your old-time political stories of when you worked in the State House all those years ago, and your stories of Democratic conventions of years past, and just, you've been a wealth of knowledge, and I've always enjoyed our time together. I wish you a good retirement and a healthy one, too. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. John, I'm sorry that you're not here, and I too wish you a speedy recovery. But the one thing I'm going to remember about John is that bumper sticker said it all. He was a full-time Counselor, and it said it all. And the energy that he gave and the dedication that he gave to his ward speaks for itself. So what amazes me is, you talk to him and you ask him, "John, how you doing? I'm ready to go." Always ready to go. And I'm going to miss that. I know you're only a phone call away. I hope to see you soon and wish you the best in your retirement.
This is where I get to say a couple of words about my dear friend. First of all, John, I've been praying for you and lighting candles for you. My colleague, the Vice President, stole my line about the full-time City Counselor, but it has to be said again, because he certainly was a full-time City Counselor. His whole life was taking care of people of Ward Five. And let me just say, we've had, you know, a rich history of some really good City Councilors for Ward Five, and I don't want to disparage any of them, but nobody, nobody has done more for Ward Five than John Powers. He has a legacy that won't quit, and it's going to continue. The fire station in the pines will be up, will be started soon, and it'll be built in a year or so. The transformation of the Riverside area is underway. We just got a grant for the off-ramps from the Lieutenant Governor, she was here the other day, to present three-quarters of a million dollars towards that. And there are a lot of great things still to happen in Ward Five because of John Powers. So he was, he was a professional City Counselor, a full-time City Counselor, and he really cared about his ward. And I'm going to miss him as a City Counselor. Of course, he's a dear friend, and I won't miss him as a friend because I'll be in touch with him. But we love you, John, and you've got a legacy that won't quit. Thank you.
And last but not least, outgoing City Counselor at Large, Anthony T. Zambudo.
So I had no intention of speaking at all tonight, and, but since everybody else did, I feel obligated to say a couple of things. I didn't want to turn this into a wake, because, you know, I'd be lying if I'd said I wasn't sad to be leaving the City Council. But, you know, I'm all about honesty, so I got to stick to the script here. So I wrote a couple of little notes down. This journey started many, many years ago with my sister Joanne and I, and most people knew her. She was a firecracker. And she would be in the Walgreens parking lot, and she could put 40 stickers on in an hour. And she would say, "Please vote for my brother." And, "Let me put a sticker on your car." "Oh, you don't want a sticker? How about a placard?" "Not a placard? How about a triangle?" They wouldn't get a, they would not get out of Walgreens parking lot without something. Now, they might have threw it away after they left, but she was unbelievable. And, you know, her and my brother-in-law and a lot of my friends, we had a small little committee. And the journey started in, you know, in the 90s, believe it or not. I know I don't look that old, but I am. And so after, after I was elected, and, you know, my sister backed off a little bit, and my dear friend Diane Santoro picked up and became, not only is she my dear friend, she was my campaign manager for many years. And I got to confess, I asked her not to come tonight because I didn't want to get emotional, and I felt if she was in the audience, I might. So that doesn't mean we don't love her, and she is a rock to me. I got to thank the citizens of Revere for electing me 12 times. 1997 was the first time. Unfortunately, it was taken away in a recount, and it was the first optical-scanned ballot machine, so it shouldn't, wasn't supposed to happen. I won by 36 votes. In the end, I lost by 21. It's not scientifically possible. However, we were, I was a lamb to slaughter. I didn't know the procedure, I didn't know what to do. They did, and they showed me. And God rest his soul, my friend Joe Delgrasso, and we did become friends. And I was at his deathbed when he died in Mass General. But he said, I had, I had some literature that was about term limits, and he said, "How's that for term limits, kid?" When he took the election away from me. But from there, we won 11 elections in a row and never looked back. Thank you. To the citizens of Revere, I thank you for allowing me to serve you for 22 straight years. I never lied to you. I wasn't the most popular City Counselor up here because I sometimes championed causes that people didn't like. But every vote I took up here was a vote of conscience. Even when it was not popular to do it, I did it because my interest was the, what was best for the city and what was best for the taxpayers. I'd rub some people the wrong way, and they know who they are, and I would do it again because I do what's right for the city. And thank you. I'm not, I'm really not looking, I'm not looking for applause. You know, I'm going to walk away tonight with my head up high. I've got a legacy. You know, I came to the City Council with the, with the goal to build a police station. We succeeded in that. I wasn't alone that I did that. My colleagues were right alongside of me, but that was my first goal. I decided that the special permit process was flawed. You used to be able to secure eight votes on the night of a public hearing, and you could pass a special permit. I changed that so that it has to go to committee and see the light of day. So we don't have these projects that pop up and we say, "How the hell could that be in a project?" Because we see it ahead of time. And if those were the only two things I did, I've got a lot of accomplishments, and we're not going to go into them, but if those are the only two things I did, I'm very proud of my service here in the City Council. Again, I'm just eternally grateful. I made some wonderful friends up here, and we'll be friends forever. And my dear friend Jerry Visconti said some kind words, but one of the things he said is, "We're friends, and we'll be friends forever." So I thank you, and God bless.
Do we get to talk about you now, Mr. President? Mr. President, thank you for your service to the city of Revere and to the City Council. Where do I begin? Tony, you're a man of great faith, and you're a man of your word. When you say you're going to do something and you commit to something, you do it. And although we've been on the opposite side of some issues, we share a lot of things in common, and first of which is the love for the city of Revere. Second is the love of our four-legged friends. You love animals as much as I do, if not more. I've never seen anyone with your compassion and dedication. What people don't see is what happens behind the scenes and the amount of work you put into the City Council and to what you do while working a full-time job and being a City Counselor and being a part of so many nonprofits. The work that you do for the Boys and Girls Club, the work that you've done as a Rotarian, it really is noticed, and it's unsung. You know, you don't talk about the things that you do, but we see it and we appreciate it. I want to thank you for your service to the city again, and really, from the bottom of my heart, Tony, you do a good job and you do the right thing, and you can walk out of this chamber tonight knowing that you stuck to your word, you did what you felt was right, and above all, were a man of faith and love for the city. Thank you.
I'm your Ward Counselor, and I watch over you. And it's been a great honor and a pleasure to, all these years, to have been part, working with you. And I want to correct you on something about the police station. You had a great president that year who stated, when he came up from the chamber, because we had some dissension down below, in the chamber, we came up, I said, "Tonight, we're going to make history." And I knew we were going to make history because I had conversations with you and some other members of the council. And that night, we voted to award a new police station, which was sorely needed. But among the accomplishments, Mr. President, you've been a great friend, and obviously we know you're a man of faith, and we certainly appreciate that, because without God, there's nothing left. And I think you've shown that. You've shown your great work with CAPPIC, you're helping people in times of need where I would venture to say that most of your constituents don't even know that you were a member of CAPPIC, and you were a vital part of that, representing the community. Those are types of things that Councilors do and people do in government that a lot of people are unaware of, what other roles they play and what other jobs they do, and little functions that make people's lives a little better. And so you've been that type of person to try to make people's lives better. Now, you'd be the first one to jump in, in a position where you want to go at it, and, you know, and you voice your opinion. You're a trumpeteer. Of course you would do that. And so we honor that. We love the mannerism into which you serve, and we also, you know, you're in a Democratic city, Tony, you know that? You're the only one that probably doesn't know that, and you're a Republican, and you're getting elected. That's an amazing thing, you know? So you have all these attributes that people don't sometimes appreciate. I do, because I know what you're doing, and because I have that knowledge of being with you so often. So again, we thank you for your service as a member of this community and a member of our council. And I know you respect the chamber as much as I do and the rest of us do, because this is the place where the people's business is conducted, and it should be done in a professional manner. And in that, you've tried to do, and I tried to do, and everyone else who sat at that position as President tries to do is conduct the people's business in an orderly fashion. That's all we can do. That's all you can ask for us. So again, congratulations on your new life. Say hi to all your puppies, and make sure that you, you know, stay in touch, because we certainly will miss you. Thank you.
Mr. President, I know you said that you didn't want to have speeches, you said it was going to be, you didn't want it to be like a wake, so I think today, tonight, we should make it more like a roast. A roast of Tony Zambudo. What can I say about Tony that he hasn't already said about himself? Tony's arm is going to be hurting by patting himself on the back all night long. Tony won't be able to leave the chambers tonight because his head won't be able to fit for the door. No. No, in all seriousness.
You're forgetting his shoulders, too.
In all seriousness, I mentioned this earlier, 88 years we're leaving, we're losing tonight on the council. Tony being 22 of those 88 years. And he's defied the odds, and Counselor Guanasso mentioned it, being the only Republican on the City Council, and not just a Republican, but a very staunch one, didn't just, didn't just keep it to himself. And one of his most famous quotes that I appreciated was, he said, "I might not tell you what you want to hear, but I'm going to tell you the truth." And the truth isn't always popular, and I admire that. I admire his honesty, I admire his consistency. Whenever Tony talked to you, you never had to worry about him going back on his word. And that's one of the most important attributes of a City Counselor, consistency. The residents of Revere should know what they're going to get, and you've taught us a lot of that. You've done that for us. You've been, again, you've been a leader on this council. You're not going anywhere. You're still going to be in Revere, you're still going to serve the city of Revere, you're still going to serve the state. And I know that you'll continue to provide myself and others guidance. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Patrick.
Tony, Mr. President, how you doing tonight?
Doing great, honey.
So in the beginning, when I became a Counselor, Tony and I didn't see eye to eye on a lot of issues. He kept on, every time I made a motion, he would say, "Oh, it's a feel-good motion, it's a feel-good motion, it's a feel-good motion." I got so sick of it, but, but you know what? As time went on, we really started to respect one another, and we developed a really good friendship. We really have. Thank you. I am so grateful for the relationship that we have now. I love you, and I'm going to miss you. Thank you so much. And I, and I'd like to present you with the card and a gift from the council.
You sure you want me to say something?
Go right ahead. Listen. Yes, I am.
So are we doing something sentimental, more of a roast? What would you like? I can go either way.
Whatever, whatever you feel like.
So I'd like to think that Tony is really a Democrat if he lived in Texas, but, but no, honestly, I've never told you this, Tony, but my first time that I've ever watched a City Council meeting, I was flicking through the channels on my television, and I seen this guy. His hands were like this, his face was beet red. No, it wasn't me, but it was, it was Tony Zambudo. He was so passionate, and he got up out of his seat, and he was making, I don't know what the topic was, but he was making such a statement that I was so in tuned with the station. I'm like, I, my God, I'm like, I thought this was like the lamest thing ever to watch. And I'm like, I just couldn't take my eyes off the television because he was just so passionate, and he was going at it with another Counselor, back and forth. And it was like WWE wrestling. I was like, wow, I'm in heaven, this is great. But no, all kidding aside, Tony, Tony is very passionate about what he does. Sure, he's a Republican, but we don't see eye to eye. And what a lot of people don't realize, I always give him a dig whenever I have a political time. He will never do something to someone intentionally to put them down, to raise himself. That's one thing I can say about Tony. He will never step on the little guy to get ahead. So, thank you for all your years of service.
Thank you. I'm more a conservative than I'm a Republican, you know that. I'm more of a conservative than I am a Republican, because some Republicans are not conservative.
Mr. President, the last 20 years have been so enjoyable working with you. Now, you mentioned 1995, when we had the recount.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. Well, I ran in 95, and I don't know if you ran that year. Because, you know, you're, you're very resilient, because you've run so many times, and finally, the time you made it, you and I were in that recount together in 97.
I had to stay, because I had to have more years of service than I ran for elections.
There you go.
Because I, I lost two elections, but I lost a third, if you count the recount.
Correct. But beside that, you know, you and I have known each other for many, many years, and I'm glad I'm replacing you as the Dean of the Council. I know it's only a title, but me, being on the Council, will be in the Council for more years than anybody here when you leave. And, and it's been a pleasure for me to share those years with you. And you've always told it like it is. I always appreciated that. And I look forward to seeing you around, and you will be getting my calls from work. So I thank you for all your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ira.
Tony, I'm not sure you remember this, but I'm sure when I tell you, you'll kinda get the gist of it. It was in 96, I believe, maybe 95. We were down at Suffolk Downs, and the great Tony Canada was there, and my brother was running for Governor's Counselor, and we met. And I forget, Chip Tuttle, they had a room and so forth, and we met and spoke. And thereafter, I moved to Revere after getting married, became a counselor, and much of what Stephen, Counselor Maribito, had been speaking about. Stephen, I got to tell you who he was arguing with: me. But the other person, someone that meant to Tony, and first was kinda on the one side of him, and then the other side of him was George Colaua. And I know George is looking down at you today. And he was very much part of your makeup here, as it was anything else. But, you know, my friend, Tony, and as we said at the recount, you were my friend then, you're my friend now.
Thank you, and I neglected to mention, I neglected to mention my dear friend and mentor, George Colaua, who we were adversaries when I first came on the Council. And one of my, my oldest friend, Mark, said, "You and him will become best friends." And I said, "Are you crazy? I can't stand the son of a gun." And George became like a father to me, and I miss him dearly. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Mr. President, two years ago, at the Christmas tree lighting outside City Hall, you said to me, because when I was coming in, I was a little nervous about how our relationship was going to begin, because it was off to a little bit of a rocky start, because we do, we disagree on, on an issue. I'll wait till the phone stops. Sorry. And you, you said to me, on the steps of the Christmas tree lighting, "We may disagree on an issue during a council meeting, but we always break bread afterwards." And I know that you are a man of deep faith, as, as everyone has said. And I think a lot of people who only see you on Monday nights may not realize the behind-the-scenes in that, what you do for our community and for our city. And, you know, when I was, I became friends with you, and somebody, and politics can be really crappy sometimes, and somebody said, "How could you be friends with him?" And it really, it struck me, because you, when you're, when you're up here, you do have a collegiality and a respect for one another. And no matter what the issue of the day was, at the end of the day, you could always put that aside, and respect, and be friends with your colleagues. And I admire that. And I think over the last couple of years that I've been on the Council with you, and probably before that, too, you have been such a vigorous defender of the integrity of this body and this, this Council, our, you know, I don't wanna say our authority or power, but you've been a defender of this institution, that would be the correct wording. And I appreciate that, I'm gonna miss you dearly, and our friendship will continue long after you are no longer up here. So I wish you well with all the puppies, too, and whatnot. And I hope to see you in Domainos one of these days. We tend to run into each other at Domainos, so we'll do dinner one night soon.
Thank you. They're not puppies anymore, they're, in fact, they're all kinda old retired champions, and I'm worried about them all, and most of you know that I lost one of them just before the election.
Well, Mr. President, I guess I have the pleasure of speaking last this time, and I, I wanna say thank you for being a mentor and a friend. And you have served with such professionalism to the City of Revere, and the passion that shows, it's just all over yourself, it's just all over your face. And that's gonna be missed. I know the City of Revere is gonna miss you up here. You are gonna be around, you're not going anywhere, because the City of Revere loves you as well. And you've served for 22 years as a Republican, okay, in, in this chamber, and it just speaks for itself. So I'm grateful for your friendship. As one said, the passion, there are times that we've spoken on the phone, and you've gone off, and I've had to rail you in and say, "Now you can't say that, or you can't do that," because of how passionate you were on certain issues. But I, you're gonna be missed, so best of luck to you, and we will talk. Thank you.
And with that, there is no further business, Council President.
Motion to adjourn, signed by.
Merry Christmas, Revere.